I tried to say, hey. You know, me asking you.
No, I'm not.
And Debbie was talking about it. She was like, yeah, she said stuff. I don't know what she was talking about. But she told me she was.
Yeah, I was probably out taking care of my girls.
Got the camera.
Oh, yeah.
It wasn't how much.
Yeah.
Well, you're the joke for coffee.
My daughter's.
Oh, man, that's dollars. That's like the big part.
Yeah.
What a deal. What a good deal. Yes.
Yeah, maybe you're jealous. Take it back.
Yeah.
He may have been going that way. He might have had a hard time. We gave us. First, they kissed me.
What time I can have a chair? I'm in. I'm in from rest. He might just really did watch the tour.
Now, we already shared.
Ready to be. And he doesn't shake his head.
You're holding my hands. Right.
He's my boy.
Just not working out. It's not working out.
And Joshua. Okay. My God, appreciate it. I'm right from him. So, Joshua.
Okay, so this. He is.
I hate to call him.
Well, I know him. He's not a good guy. I used to get him. And they told me that he did that.
It's all the signs.
I should have done.
Well.
I feel like. You're like the fifth player. He goes a little busy. Maybe the third person.
Yeah. Especially.
And that's the hardest thing. Why?
Oh, yeah. I like that.
I like that. You never get that. Anyway, I just want to. There's been a single. Nervous about it. I promise. I didn't.
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
But I just wanted to tell you. Okay.
We have the two bands.
I don't have the order that's ready to go. Like, I don't know. There's a person in there.
Oh, she had these.
You're on lookers. Yep. She's just. Internals. Yeah, what happened?
Once you get it.
Having the.
And what did you guys? Yes.
That's three bucks.
By the way, thank you to their mom. Yeah.
We are waiting on the arrival of our attorney who had a flight there on the way here. So bear with us. She should be here momentarily.
It's beautiful. Man, though. I'm a politician. I'm not a comedian. Maybe you want to write this. Maybe you can book it. And he's known everywhere now. So you know I'm tired. The car, my man. Initials call with a giant P.
Can I just say Trump's everybody?
Yeah. Initials call with a giant P.
He trumps everybody.
I got a break.
We are gonna do good. We will know exactly where we got to right out of Austin.
Keep it moving.
We did. So we. Seek to. Earlier, there's a summer.
That's what I'm telling you. All politicians, both. We are over there.
He got that. I don't have a mouthful. That's what I didn't believe.
Maybe you're being. What?
All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your patience. Roll call will reflect. I will call our meeting orders July 26, 2016. Roll call reflect that Councilman Dimick is recovering from her knee replacement surgery. So we send her our wishes. And I haven't heard for certain, but I'm assuming she will not be present tonight. And Councilman Ramon is, as you all know, he's in the catering business. And one of his clients is CNN. And with them doing the Democratic Convention, they're catering food. So he will be late tonight. So with that being said, we will go ahead and proceed. We do have a forum. And at this time, I'll take public comments on agenda items. As you'll see, we only have one item. It's just a discussion item tonight about our alcohol ordinance amendment. So if anybody has any comments on that item, Mr. Murphy.
Green light or?
Green light.
Good evening. I have a question. Since the agenda, it appears just came out today because yesterday there was nothing listed as per the reason for this calling. And has anybody got documentation that you're looking at?
I downloaded the agenda Friday and printed it out.
What is it?
It's the Alcohol Emergency Ordinance Amendment.
The current ordinance or proposed ordinance?
We're just discussing.
We're discussing the current and proposed. We don't have. We don't have our copies of them. I don't have the current ordinance in front of me. I've got access to it on my laptop.
I have the current ordinance in front of me.
This. This was published by somebody in the not too distant past. It has nine hundred and fifty-three sentences, which some of it, folks, are current ordinance and some of it I guess is proposed ordinances. But it references crazy things. Farms, airports owned by the city. Just nuts. I mean, this thing is a total waste of somebody's time. And I'm sure the attorney charged a lot for this. And then the other day, I sent another document that's four pages of PDF. And when I printed it out, it has three columns. One appears to be what is our current ordinance, but it only has about four or five items listed. Then in the next column, it has what I guess are proposed things. And then the last column is blanked. You're supposed to make comments. Is this something that's gonna go to the public? Or who? Who is going to determine this ordinance?
The city council.
Where are you gonna get the input?
The city council will. And we're opening the floor for comments tonight. And we'll. I'm sure we'll have.
This is gonna take a long time.
I'm sure it will.
Because it's item by item. So what is the purpose of the meeting tonight?
Is to have a discussion.
Do you want us to go through all these items? Want to do that?
No, we're elected officials. We will go through the items. And you're welcome to comment on any specific item that you have concern about.
Okay, but what are you going by?
We're going by.
You're gonna go through the book that Ruth asked?
I don't. That's her book.
Would you care for me to? Mr. Murphy?
Yes, sir.
This meeting has been on our agenda for quite some time.
Yeah, you've been talking about it for a year. But there's nothing really published for anybody to look at.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer the question.
But we don't have any. We haven't published any recommendations. We're simply talking about the ordinance versus other ordinances that we've looked at to see how we wanna blend it together in our ordinance. That's the purpose of the meeting. We're not. We're not acting on any. We're not legislating tonight. We're simply having a discussion.
And I will hold the rest of my comments to the end. Will I be able to speak at the end?
Yes, you will.
Okay.
Thanks, sir. You can leave it all. Kissing. Any other comments regarding the agenda? Laura?
Thank you. Good evening. I believe what he's referring to is on May 5th, there was a canceled council meeting. And in that agenda packet was the alcohol agenda. And that's what's been key printed out. But we didn't see it to come tonight. So you don't have that from the May 5th meeting?
It was May 17. It was the same thing. You know, basically, we were going to schedule a workshop for tonight. And we have provided background material for council to assist us in facilitating this workshop.
Okay, but they're using. They're using that from the May 17th. If it's May 17th, May 5th, whatever it was.
Whatever day it was in May.
But the public didn't get it on this agenda.
It's not. It's not ripe yet. It's not ready.
Well, we know that.
That's what we're discussing here tonight. It's like when we.
And comments will be allowed at the end of the workshop. This is. This workshop is for the elected officials.
We understand that also. But if it were on the agenda before, why was it not moved to the agenda today?
It was. It was just something we ran to give us an idea of what to look for and look at and what parts we wanted to look at. And since we had already read it, we didn't need to have it again. But I have it printed out in here also.
All right. Any other comments? Okay. That being said, we'll move into new business. And again, to preface what or refer back to what we were just talking about. The purpose of this is that the city council has requested the opportunity to begin the rewrite of the city's longstanding alcohol ordinance. With the growth of multiple high-end developments now being considered. Changes in the alcohol code to accommodate a plan for new growth being anticipated is needed. The city attorney has provided background information to council and information resources regarding how other communities in the metro Atlanta area address this issue. The city council has already had to make some accommodations for the new emerging microbrewery industry. These adjustments expire on September 30th of this year, 2016, unless council adopts a new code with changes. The goal of the workshop tonight is, number one, to plan for and plan for anticipated growth and the needs of the city. Provide staff with adequate direction to draft and slash propose a new alcohol ordinance, alcohol code. Three, to streamline the alcohol process and management thereof wherever feasible. So with that being said, I will turn it over to our representative attorney, Amelia. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to applaud the city on its efforts to all current assesses alcohol code. I think it's very prudent, particularly with respect to what makes in the law that make these types of. Just customary for these type, you know, for municipal activities. So what? What we've done in our office is, and I handed to a packet that's titled seven twenty-six sixteen alcohol meeting discussion confidential attorney client privilege. And essentially, this document is what we've compiled and put together following our assessment in reviewing your current alcohol code. And I invite you to stop me along the way and ask for any questions that may arise. Now, generally, in reviewing the alcohol code, what's probably best is to have a discussion on the big picture of the code. We have reviewed your code, and it is somewhat of a homework assignment, I would say, for staff to navigate through the multiple provisions that you have that relate to alcohol. And this is because you have decades and decades of legislation that relate to these provisions. So if you look at the first. Well, if you look at the top packet, your code is essentially, the majority of Hate Wheels code is essentially regulation on eight different components. And those components are listed on the front page of the packet that I handed you. So you have the retail beer and wine components, the package store components, on-premises consumption components, on-premises consumption under 2,000 square feet, open six hours or less than a day components, on-premises arts, growler, wholesale, and manufacturing. These sections are predominantly the basis for your code. The additional sections include miscellaneous licensing related sections, which set forth different type license requirements, as well as the alcohol review board components that give duties and responsibilities for the alcohol review board, in addition to fee assessments and license fee assessments charts that include those amounts. So if you look at. What I. What we've done is, if you look at the first document, and it's titled Retail Beer and Wine Stores, one of eight. I think it would be helpful for the council to have a big picture review of what these provisions entail. So what we've done is we've condensed them down to three pages. And we made them a lot smaller. These provisions relate strictly to the beer and wine license regulations within the city. Now, I don't believe or I don't know if the council is prepared tonight to give comment or feedback on these. Our suggestion would be to include and incorporate any counts, any feedback that we receive from the council with respect to these provisions, but to also consolidate these provisions and to make them there. If you look through this, when you look through this, and if you haven't already, there's a lot of duplicate provisions. There's a lot of redundancy in the code.
That's the one thing I've noticed. Can't we like have just one section is, this is what you need to get a license? Because we repeat it for every single one of those classifications. Again, we go through all the things they need to do. Beer and wine store has to do it. This place has to do it. And the restaurant has to do it. Can't we change the ordinance so that's just one section and it applies to all of the classes? Would that not simplify all this a lot?
Yeah, you are absolutely correct. That would simplify the ordinance tremendously. I think probably about forty to fifty percent of that section could be narrowed down to pretty much state the same thing that it states now, just more efficiently stated. So I. So I do agree with you on that. So I think that. I think as part of this process, I think that it's going to take probably at least three meetings at a minimum to establish, to give our office sufficient guidance as to be directed that you would like to go. But as far as one of the items for the next meeting, we are able to present proposed ordinance that has excerpts from this particular section that does narrow down those provisions and that does consolidate to make this particular section less complex. It's. In my opinion, it's way more complex than you think it would be, which is.
Well, my. Personally, my ultimate goal is to simplify the complicated nature of the ordinance, number one. And number two, be responsive to the changes in the industry. I mean, when we created this ordinance, we, I mean, the word growler was in it, I think, but I didn't know what that was. And now it's a whole new phenomenon that's going on. And microbreweries were not something that we're anticipating at the times. So for me, those are. Those are my biggest areas of concerns along with clarification. You know, you have. You have people that. That say, well, we need to have like wine bars. A separate class for wine bars. But I wanna be careful that by allowing sale of alcohol on premise without some kind of food guideline, you know what I'm saying? If we. Wanna allow one component, we're opening the door for potential abuse. So I wanna be very careful as we navigate through that, that we. That we aim well. And shoot once on the steal as possible.
So are you talking about the food sales provision?
Well, I mean, that's one thing that we have to consider. For example, if you wanna have a, you know, a wine and cheese bar, for example.
Yeah.
Then right now, if you have on-premise consumption, you've gotta sell fifty-one percent of food. And then the complex provisions of that. So restricting those for the wine bar opens the door up for problems in other areas. I just wanna make sure we balance that very carefully.
You know, I can. I can see us changing the fifty-one percent rule for beer and wine. But I would still like to keep it if you have the liquor license. So if you have a license to sell also liquor, then keeping that fifty-one percent alcohol sales, I think is important. Uh, food sales, yeah, is important. You know, 'cause we don't want. I don't want.
You don't want.
A straight. A straight bar. A straight bar, like a straight daiquiri bar, where they don't sell anything. They just sell liquor drinks. They don't even sell beer and wine. I think that would. But if you had just beer and wine as a. As your class for alcohol sales, then I can see you being able to just sell beer and wine, maybe cheese, or whatever else you wanna sell.
Well, reduce it to maybe like a twenty, twenty-five percent or something. So you still make sure there's some food component.
Because if it's beer and wine, you could wind up with inadvertently wind up with a beer and wine only bar.
Bar.
So if you don't put some. There's gotta be some tea other than just alcohol sales is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And I know.
So how do you? How do you want us to go through this? Like, do you want our just opinions on like different stuff to go out to you or?
And this is one other thing I wanna ask. Because one of the things, reading this and having actually had someone that went through the application process, it is a very difficult process for an applicant. I mean, it's expensive to do. It's expensive to buy. And then there's outside of the license fee, there's other lots of other expenses you have to do. And it just seems like that that could be narrowed down and streamlined. So for the applicant, it wasn't so hard. Years ago, I was told the reason we have all these requirements was to keep the mob out. And I really don't see the mob coming to Hate Wheel anytime soon to open a restaurant or anything. So, you know, but it's places that we want, like Chili's and things like that. Restaurants, they're not gonna be here if it gets so hot. We make it too hard to decide someplace else. I think that's one of our things. There's just so many layers for them to go through.
I guess for me, I'm okay with the fees. You know, 'cause I want the standards to be up here. You know, if you can't afford to keep your, to pay the fee, then.
I'm okay with it.
Really be open. And. For the Chili's thing, I really don't like Chili's. I think. But no, no. I mean, I'm not. But for me. But for me, I look at the city, and I don't see this city being a city of mass food with chain operations.
But even in. Even in Ramon Park, which wouldn't be Ramon Park, still, we want to be able to do it and just not make it so difficult. Like I say, years ago, I did an application for a client for the city of Atlanta, and it took us like five months just to fill out the application. And I think that one's even gotten simpler, so. But no, I have no problem with it.
Yeah. But I also don't wanna be the simplest and easiest place to get a liquor license around. It's a privilege. You know. You also wanna keep your standards high. You know, I don't want this to be the place where anybody can come in and get a liquor license. You know, I still want our expectations to be up here because that's what we expect. You know, that's what we expect. And, you know, I want it to be somewhat difficult, you know, somewhat expensive.
Amelia, do you? From your cursory view, do you see, other than repetitious items, do you see any major? I'm just seeing if we can step through one at a time here. Do you see any major issues with the retail beer and wine stores? Because the retail sales, that's the least of my concern. I think we're pretty. So much of that's governed by state law anyway. I think we're pretty good on now, most of that. Do you see any glaring holes or concerns that you have in that portion of the work?
Particularly last year. July 1st, House Bill sixty-three went into effect. It extended the rights that brewery. Brewery, as far as wine, beer tours, as far as. Have on-premises consumption. How it's a needful or existent from any inconsistent requirement through. These are temporary, so of course they need to be efficient in the ordinance. So I think that that is probably the most glaring problem. Just simplification and then making that section consistent with state law and then bringing you a document that you can review and tell us if there's anything else that you want to further regulate in specific to the city situation.
Based upon a briefing that I attended in Savannah, GMA, there's lots of lobbying going on now from the craft beer industry towards the state legislature, which I. And I'm really shocked at how antiquated Georgia state laws are when it comes to even their ability to sell in other states all around us, they can sell directly. But the alcohol lobby has commandeered, in my opinion, has commandeered our legislators to the point where they've made it very cumbersome for them. So there was a young lady there that represented the Craft Beer Association of the state, within the state of Georgia. So there's gonna be some more lobbying to come on that. So we'll have to be open to watching this next legislative session as well. See what might come be coming down the pipe.
Yeah, and just for your review, if you look at the back of the temporary amendment chart that I put in here, I also attached a copy of House Bill sixty-three. And again, this went into effect last year, July 1st. And it will. It just illustrates exactly what changes were made to the state code. So that's just a copy of the House bill. So that's just a copy of the House bill.
I would like to bring up the ability to have open container in the city. An open container being just in a defined area, and maybe even during defined times. I've talked to Rick Gladysek about this, and I asked him, you know, if we have open container, what are the laws, and does that take away your teeth when dealing with people that have become overly intoxicated and can't handle themselves? He said, no, they can still be arrested for public drunkenness. So it doesn't really give away their teeth, but it also gives a reason for people to come here and be able to walk from restaurant to restaurant to restaurant with a drink. I guess I sort of want to see what council's ideas are on having an open container, and maybe defining it just in the arts overlay district. I don't know if we can, can we define it by zoning and say just in the arts overlay zone?
Well, in Savannah, they literally define it by street.
They do define it by street.
And I think that's what we can do, you know, and they define it, that it's only one drink, and it can't be over a certain amount, certain size.
Sixteen ounces.
Sixteen ounces.
And you can only buy one at a time. The purpose is to promote, the purpose is to promote things like art cross, where you're going to want to go from location to location. But also to promote, you know, for example, if someone's downtown and they stop by Beer Girl and they want to, you know, grab a beer there and walk down to the restaurant, I mean, we want to encourage that, but not encourage public intoxication.
Right.
So you win us a little of everything it's about.
You did. But it seems like it's, I mean, it's under control, like, there's nothing too crazy when you get down there.
Not really, because they.
Because they, they, they're very strict on all of the rules down there. And I would just like to see that we have that. And I was looking at the arts overlay district. And it pretty much is Dogwood, Virginia Avenue, down Little Virginia, as they call it, and then north central past Dogwood, and I think it goes almost to seventy-five over there. And I think that might encompass a lot of our areas that people might want to walk from business to business with a beverage. And then that also brings up another question that I have of brown bagging and BYOB. What's the difference between brown bagging and BYOB?
I would have to look at the state code. I don't want to just tell you that.
Okay.
But I can update you if you want to go specific to the state code.
Okay.
Now, what you will find is that different jurisdictions, you have some jurisdictions who define those terms because they are ambiguous.
Yeah.
And they do lead to litigation. I think the safest bet is to look at case law, where it's been defined, or at least approved or affirmed by the court, and then to stick to a definition that is as close to that, and then look to cities that have had successful, that have had litigation on the issue and have been successful in those efforts to kind of mirror your brown bagging or your BYOB to those requirements. Is that something that the council is interested in?
Well, I guess, I guess, if you're, if we have open container, but you have nowhere to walk to, that could be an issue. You know, because if you can't walk into an establishment with your beverage, then where are you going to walk to? You've got to be able to walk to somewhere, and I guess that opens us up to either, whatever you want to call it, either brown bagging or BYOB. And I could just see us having another classification, if you don't want a full alcohol license, but you still want to allow brown bagging or BYOB for someone to walk in there with a drink, then you still have to go through all the alcohol qualifications to get your alcohol license.
Yeah, because I think in Savannah, I think if you buy a beer, you can walk into this, I think of the store that sells the Pringles, you know, candy store, I think you can walk in there with an alcoholic beverage.
Yeah.
But that place is not an alcohol, they do not have an alcohol license, so they're not distributing alcohol in any way.
And I'm assuming that bringing your alcohol means like take alcohol into a place that you want to have them fix you a drink there or open your wine, where open container, I've just got drinks already fixed, and I'm just drinking out of it. And they're supposed to be defined differently, right?
Yeah, to a certain extent, and BYOB is like if you're having a special event, like a wedding, and they put wine on the tables, like being permitted to do that.
With an open, or the brown bagging would be able to like, so if I thought I had a Beer Girl and I.
Some people would interpret brown bagging as walking down the street and drinking out of a bag.
Yeah.
Pouring a beer in it. Other people would say, I've got my alcohol in a brown bag that I'm taking in, so those terms could be interchangeable.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that, you know, if someone is going to Beer Girl and gets a beer, and they want one to go, and they want to walk somewhere, they can walk to Mommy's, and maybe Mommy's is, it's a Cuban restaurant that's right next door, they don't have an alcohol license. But maybe they want to be able to allow alcohol in their establishment, but not sell it. I just want to see a sort of a provision for them to be able to, for that to happen legally.
Well, we definitely would have to amend your code to allow that.
Oh, I'm sure, there's a lot of amendments that are going to happen, because I want to, you know, because we're rewriting this, I want to.
The only thing I want to be careful about in doing all this is not making it so difficult on law enforcement to enforce this stuff, because it's going to be, it's going to be, it could be cumbersome for them. They have to go figure out, somebody's sitting on Mommy's porch drinking a beer, you know, where'd they get it from?
One way, or policy question you should ask is, okay, when would it be permitted? In other words.
Right.
Some provisions, such as you're, you know, talking about, you know, could be interpreted as being open all year long. If you did it based on special events and designated areas, that's easier to enforce and probably.
Because it links to a permit.
Because it leads to some sort of.
But, but, I talked to Rick about this, and Rick, because I called Rick, because I wanted his opinion. Like, I, he is the chief of police, he knows the law, and he knows how to enforce it. And I talked to Rick, and he's like, as long as you define an area, we're good. As long as, if you want to define a time, we're good. Whatever you want to do, we can enforce it. So I don't want to be like, it's hard to enforce, because.
Well, one of the things, you know, I went to, I went to a woman's ninetieth birthday party, okay, at an establishment that did not sell alcohol, did not have an alcohol license or anything. And the family wanted to bring in champagne and do a toast for their mother's ninetieth birthday, but under our rules, they couldn't. And I thought, that's really, you know, that's really sad, that we can't have, you know, allow somebody just to sample, you know, it's not like you're going to have a bunch of octogenarians getting hammered.
I know, I'm thinking about it.
But I also don't want these people to also bring in, like, I could see beer and wine, but I don't want them bringing in a handle of liquor into an establishment and being able to just drink it all themselves. Like, I think it should be limited to maybe one bottle of wine per table and six pack of beer, or, I don't know. I think there needs to be limitations if we're going to have brown bag or BYOB, not a handle of liquor sitting on your table, and y'all just pouring it off. That's not what.
Also, also assuming the open container is required to be in like paper cups and disposable cups. One of the things we could require is that the name of the establishment, the soul of the drink be on there.
That's correct.
Which, that way, the police would know where it came from. And stop, stop somebody from having something in their purse and pouring into it, I understand that, but you're always going to have some of that, but that would limit a lot if they want some.
Savannah's, Savannah's code says, drinking from can, bottle, glass is prohibited.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
And most of the gold you have, have the name of where you bought them from.
But I don't know if it should have to have the name, I don't know.
Well, it's all, because otherwise, I mean, I'm bringing it up from home, like, up down the street, and then how the police.
But what's wrong with that? Is there something wrong with that?
I don't know. I don't do it.
I'm just saying, like, is it, is there something wrong with being able to just, if you're in the districts, to be able to just pour a beer from your house and walk to a restaurant? I don't know, there's, I don't know. Whoa. If you're not publicly drunk, and you're not stumbling over the place, then I guess for me, I don't see the big deal about it, so.
That's where we got to aim one, aim many times and shoot once on this, to make sure we try to hone in on everything we're trying to accomplish, but not give away the farm in doing it.
Right.
Well, how about I propose that, that we, that with the proposal that we present, that we include allowance of open containers, BYOB, for special events in the arts district, and that we mirror it to Savannah, just because that's been brought up several times.
And Savannah's, I think Savannah's probably been tested, you know, I'm sure that, and it's not out of hand down there either. I mean, you see people intoxicated, but long-term unfortunately deals with them. And you're going to have that regardless, you can't stop.
You have that now.
Yeah.
But I don't know if it should be just for special events, you know? I think if we want to really promote the south side and promote this area, you know, being able to walk from one restaurant to another restaurant with a drink is something that's, that a lot of people are looking for.
Well, we could include special events, so you have that option, and then also include a zone.
Okay, okay, all right, yeah.
So do you want us to start initially with just those two, just the arts overlay, and then opportunity for special events?
That would be a good starting point, for me, anyway.
So for the special event, it'd be like, if the special event was out of the arts overlay, then you use a special event permit to do the open container in that area. Is that why we'd have a special event?
Yeah, and it would also include other areas.
Okay, yeah, 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 so if it's outside of that defined area.
Yeah, if it's outside of the defined area, if there's going to be a parade or a festival, and you want to allow vendors to sell X, Y, Z.
Well, like right now, for example, during our fall festival, if somebody wanted to go over to Beer Girl and acquire a beverage, they could not back out to the park with it. They cannot. I hope you don't mind it, they like to keep you as an example. It's in a good way, though.
She's always wants to buy something there.
We're promoting increased consumption of alcohol down there. Do we want to discuss happy hours?
Isn't that against state law?
It is state law.
I thought happy hours, I thought any kind of promotion of buy one, get one free kind of thing was against state law.
Um, I mean, just, happy hour is a very broad term.
Okay.
So just in general, is happy hour prohibited? No. Several businesses have happy hours. But there are, like the buy one, get one free, there are limitations there.
Okay.
So there are specific state laws.
That's what I think.
Yeah, that's.
No, it's applied all days.
Yeah, that's what it used to be, yeah.
It used to be buy one, get one free, or whatever.
So the state law also prohibits the unlimited drinking for a certain price?
Yes.
Okay, because that's in here, that you can't have that, but we don't even need to have that in there, because that's state law.
Okay, well, you say that's in there.
That's, that's in this packet right here, the red one. It says.
Okay. But that is the current law.
The state law is literally, okay.
Yeah, that's.
So does it need to be in our alcohol license, in our alcohol in here, and if it's state law?
Well, state law prohibits it, and your code says that.
You can't have it in any way.
It would apply to state law.
So it doesn't really need to be in there?
Yeah, if you want it in there, just to put emphasis on it, then it's your discretion, but you can still enforce it if it not be in there.
Okay.
And I want to make, everybody that gets a license has to know the state law, because they have to get a state license. So there's no need us repeating that to them and making our system that much longer, because they have to get the state license at the same time they get our license. So they should know all those rules.
Yeah.
So what about giving, if it's alcohol at a different price at certain times of the day or certain days of the week? Like currently, that's illegal in Hayville.
Yeah.
How does, I, I.
I think I'll read the state law.
Yeah, you can't, you can allow that under state law.
Yeah.
That's just a Hayville restriction.
Right.
Okay, so.
So how do we feel about that?
I wouldn't have a, I mean, you know, if you're, if you're at Sombrero's and they want to have a bucket for X number of dollars, I don't, probably that, as long as it's, the problem is, if you, they could price it as such where it becomes a de facto happy hour, buy one, get one free, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
But at the same time, it doesn't prohibit an establishment to give away their alcohol.
Right.
So.
I guess, I guess for me, when I see happy hour, I just see something at a discount. You know, I just see it cheaper than a normal cocktail or a normal drink. I have no problem with, I don't know if we want to put any restrictions on the happy hour, how much discount we can give. Is there, is there a way that we can do that?
I think it gets set by percentage of normal sales value or something. Of course, that gets into the enforcement.
Yeah, the percentages, we can mirror the state law, but you do have, and you have discretion there to make it more liberal. You don't have to go as narrow as state law goes. So as far as a start, if you want this included, we can just make it mirror state law, and then it would be your discretion, just as far as the time periods that you would allow this to occur.
Okay.
Like from four to six, or whatever time that, you know, you would like the ordinance to be updated to reflect.
Because I could see that bringing in people from outside the area, you know, maybe if, you know, if I'm working in Delta, but no one might go home to Alpharetta and I have my drink. Or if I know that Slideways is having a discount, because they have happy hour, they all might go to Slideways and have a drink. And then while I'm there, I might have some food, and then while I'm there, I might also go to Beer Girl, you know.
Then you get your, then you get your, then you're out on the way home.
And then we're rolling and everything.
We got money for all areas.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it is a point, I mean.
I want to draw people in to Hayville.
What we're looking for is to capitalize on all the positive aspects of it, while minimizing the negative aspects of it.
You just got to, you just got to make that happen.
Wow.
It's going to be no problem.
That's a narrow field right there.
And we don't want to make it over the confines.
That's right.
Right.
We can do that two pages or less.
Is there a timeframe that you would like us to start off with initially as far as maybe the ordinance to include that?
I guess, I guess, between like, what do most people get off? Three? Three to six?
What more do you think?
I get off three. I also get off, I get off some good work at seven o'clock.
I would say I would say around like four to six, four to seven, something like that.
Yeah.
So get off, let's start with four to seven. Yeah, let's start with that.
That's fine.
And is that seven, I mean, is that, are there any days that you would like to restrict?
I think it's fine. Preferably have it on Sundays, so I can have some cocktails on Sundays.
And then like, like I said, I think it's going to take at least three at a minimum meetings to push this out.
Oh, I know.
So whatever we present to you, just let us know what needs to be adjusted, so. If you look at the second document in this packet, it's called Two of Eight, and it's Article Five Package Stores. The package store provisions, portion of the alcohol, Hayville's alcohol code is probably the most lengthy. These can be substantially consolidated, substantially. There is a lot of redundancy here, so we would, our plan, unless the council instructs otherwise, is to also consolidate and narrow these provisions, just to simplify the process.
I want to make sure that we keep the limit on how many we have in the city.
Yeah.
You know, I don't want us to be overwritten.
A town full of liquor stores.
Liquor stores on every corner. I think that's important.
And another issue that's always been cumbersome, and this goes for on-premise versus as well as liquor stores, as well as convenience stores, is this visibility issue. Because the purpose, the genesis of it, from what I recall, was typically liquor stores and convenience stores that sell alcoholic beverages are more prone to armed robbery than bars or annual restaurants, let's say. And so, again, this is based upon my memory of the curers we now have. We wanted to make sure that if our officers were responding to a hold-up alarm call, that they didn't get themselves ambushed by going into a situation where they couldn't see on the premises enough around the cash register area to see what was going on. So, but, but it was complicated, because everybody had their own interpretation of what clear visibility meant and how that, so any. So any simplification of that with the purpose of maintaining the, the intent is important to me.
And I don't think we require the visibility for restaurants and stuff.
Well.
We do now, but I don't.
We should. Yeah, it's been back and forth, but it's been very, it's been very contentious and cumbersome. I mean, a lot of restaurants, for example, the Hilton, you know, you can't have clear visibility from the outside because the restaurant's inside the premises. So, uh, I don't know, we gotta find a way to, to.
If the idea is for robberies, not too many restaurants get robbed, so it's not like.
Well, nowadays, anything's subject to get robbed. But I still say retail establishments are, are much more prone to armed robbery than, than a restaurant would be.
But I want to make sure that we keep it so we don't have just a brick building with no windows, with just a door as a liquor store or an establishment.
On liquor store and retail, you gotta have windows, there's no doubt about that. But the cumbersome nature of this came in, cause we applied from, again, based upon my recollection, we applied these rules to restaurants as well and it became cumbersome because depending upon the location, depending upon when it was built, depending upon what was there when they got their original license, it was complicated and an enforcement nightmare.
But I don't know, I just feel like windows are, are something. I don't want to see a bunch of business with no windows.
Of course not.
You know, cause then that doesn't look good. It's not aesthetically pleasing.
Of course.
To the neighborhood if we had.
Some of that can be governed in other areas of our code as well.
And you do have a section in your alcohol code that governs visibility. It's five, two, three. And I think subsection D would probably be the most problematic for hotels. And I can read that to you if you want. It says, uh, the, the area must be kept free of visual obstruction so that persons outside the facility may clearly see inside the facility. No tinted shades or other devices shall be used to obstruct the view into the facility. I think that this provision, I think that it's good as is as far as what you just said and you want it to accomplish and that's not having an all brick, you know, alcohol establishment where you can't see in. I think that we could tailor this a little bit to make it more hotel and motel friendly. Is that something that you would like us to do?
Well, I currently, I'm familiar with an establishment that has a large window area in it and they're not allowed to have any shades or anything. And so what has happened is the summer heat, especially as I was a kid lately, it heats up all day. All that heat's coming in those windows and the air conditioner is just running a big fan and they can't keep up with it. So they, they can't even have a, a window tint to help diffuse some of that. So trying to balance those, those kind of needs as well.
Well, if you want to go more liberal, I think Savannah or maybe Athens Clark are good ordinances to use because they don't have a lot of economic activity perspective.
Right, but I don't want to throw the intent away. The sake, the cost of the intent is to protect the lives of our police officers from going into a hostile situation.
Okay. Okay, so you want.
But that was, that was, that was a restaurant location. I was speaking of not.
So balance the interest of the police with the interest, with the interest of the city and promoting economic growth in a healthy capacity.
Talking about alcohol.
I brought drugs. I think it's water.
Council Ramon joined me at nine of, seven oh four P M.
Physically.
Physically. You've been here since the beginning.
On this window thing, I probably missed something. I thought you told me one time that there was a little bit of a distinction or the heart of something being more to do, and I could be totally wrong with package stores and convenience stores and not restaurants. I mean, I can't see into a Red Lobster or a Steak and L or a lot of different restaurants. So I don't know where that balance is supposed to be. Can I be caught up on that?
No, that's a way, that's a way we're just speaking of.
Yeah.
That our code doesn't distinguish the difference and there should be a difference.
Because I was stating that the genesis of the ordinance was to protect our law enforcement officers from going to a call. And typically, as I was saying before you arrived, that a liquor store or a retail establishment like a convenience store is much more apt to be held up or, you know, have an armed robbery committed against them than a restaurant would be. But at the same time, Council Powell made the comment that you don't want to just totally have a solid brick wall restaurant either, if possible. But again, we talked about the Hilton, you know, you can't see anything. You can't see the restaurants from the outside. You have to be going up into the premises to actually see them. So.
I think if you have like a restaurant inside of a, a larger building, that's sort of different than a standalone restaurant.
Then we got the unique situation at the theater. I mean, they've got to have some kind of closure for the ambiance in the theatrical production.
They can't have their curtains open.
I'm sorry, what?
They can't have their curtains open because they're pretty likely to kill the mood in there.
I know, but I think the statute says that because there's alcohol in there, they need to be open. So, you know, we have things to fix.
Then we can put a provision in there.
But, uh.
But it'd be easier if there's just something where everybody could, rather than making a bunch of exceptions, if we can fix something that would work.
I don't know if there's a one size fits all for.
Maybe one size fits three. Make three sizes fits all. How's that? Three levels maybe.
All medium and large.
Yeah. A place like the theater that doesn't, can't have the outside line, it needs to be in its own class. And then restaurants that want to limit it need to be, and the package stores that they definitely can see in need to be in the third class.
I've changed my thinking on a lot of stuff lately and I, I don't know, maybe I'm going to the dark side of it. I'm kind of tired of the us them thing. I just want to do what's good for hate law and I know that's really what all of us want to do. I, I'm wondering if sometimes, like with the grower, they had specific needs. We addressed those needs, took care of it and moved on. I don't know if that's diving after the whole ordinance. I don't know if there's that many things to change. Don't the needs arise? I don't know. Well, why didn't you say this a while back? I don't know. I guess because I was eighty. But I've just seen lately where we have problems come up and needs come up, whether it be for the brewery or for the grower and we've addressed it, fixed that specific thing and moved on. And I know that with the sign ordinance, we had to do stuff with free speech. And I know that with adult entertainment, we had to do some things. There were some major fixes, overall fixes, but for some of this.
Well, Amelia was talking earlier before you got here about the complexity and ambiguity that exists, ambiguity that exists in, in the ordinance. And I mean, we don't have to throw the baby out on the bathwater. I don't think that's our intention.
But can those points be given and let's say, okay, yeah, we see that, let's change this. I just feel like standing at the whole ordinance, it's huge.
Well, I think also part of.
It's a large undertaking.
One of the things we did, we repeat the requirements for each and every class, which makes it that much longer and much more complicated, where we can change that and just have the requirements for getting a license here and then list the, the individual requirements for package store stuff, what's different. As part of what we're trying to do is simplify it a little bit.
But one of the things, Michael, that we want to take on is the open container situation for, so we can, because we're constantly having to respond to certain kinds of businesses or certain kinds of events, we had a lengthy discussion about open container, taking, you know, getting a beer at one location, walking to another location that may not have a license. And our ordinance doesn't anticipate that at all. So that's kind of take a, I mean, I don't think we're gonna have to totally throw everything out and start over again.
Well, that's kind of like the stuff with the grower. I mean, there was a specific need and they can research, well, how does Savannah do it? Or is it legal for people to walk around? Or New Orleans, how do they do it? Is it legal or do people just do it and not enforce it?
It's all, it's all right here.
So I, I would rather just address those unique things and.